As you know, and we talked about downstairs. I announced my retirement for the year. And the idea with that is to, I don't expect me to be the entire process for the move here for the multi-year process with the city manager. We want to help with that transition. One other thing, just kind of FYI, as we talk about work and more time that will be involved with that transition. We did start it, it's not being created, normally the CIP, my reason is the mayor and Dean. And so, we actually started at CIP so that it can happen in, actually it can happen in July, but it'll happen in late April through May. And the idea with that is that the bulk of that work can be done, so that the city manager can certainly amend it or change it or do what needs to be done to roll it into the budget, but won't have to start with all the heavy lifting to happen with that CIP as the long term. So, just wanted you to be aware that we're working on that so that the bulk of the heavy lifting that can be done. But we'll involve some work sessions for you in May that normally would have happened in June or July. It'll be getting out with that schedule. Tonight is really to start that conversation about the recruitment process. It is your process. It is your goal and responsibility to hire a city manager. And we've got some expertise here for you tonight with Vicky and with Steve and a presentation to just start that conversation, recognizing that it is your process. Even though I, you know, there's a broad background, I will be sitting on the sidelines mostly at this and turning it over to Steve and Vicky, you know, to perhaps guide the conversation for you with the process. And, but just know that I'm here as a resource for questions that you may have with that. And so, we don't know where we're going to be able to get with the time. We thought maybe the council meeting would end a little bit earlier than it did. My understanding is that get a few people leaving early or having to be by six. Okay, so I'm not sure that still keeps the quorum, whether you want to go with the timing of that, but perhaps we can, I don't care what I add, we'll talk about the timing of it. I understand there's also going to be a due for another meeting that's potentially scheduled. So, with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Vicky to talk about, you know, some of the agenda. We sent out a lot of materials for you ahead of time, so we hope you're prepared for the conversation and with that, Vicky. Unless you have any questions, up to Vicky there. Vicky come here for you.
So, I was just going to introduce the process for tonight. And this was all sent out on Friday, so that you should, you know, hopefully have time to look it over, so we can go through it pretty quickly. But, so the materials that I'm presenting today with respect to the, you know, proposed process, this is from the 2012 process when we used, the council did an external search for a city manager. So, you know, note that this is the 2012 process and as Dale said, this is your process and to tweak it to what our council desires. So, kind of the goal for tonight was just kind of to walk through that 2012 recruitment process and then turn it over to council president Weld to walk council through those first initial questions that have to be answered, so that we can move the process forward. With that, did you want?
Yes, just to get a hand, is, other than Catherine, does anyone else that has to leave early on this? So, if the body's comfortable with it, like not too for Catherine to at least have a chance to share some of her thoughts. She does have to leave for a prior date, and it's six o'clock, so she's just going to share some thoughts and then we'll get back and track through the presentation.
Thank you. Yes, I do apologize. I have a leery want standing commitment to my day job that I have to keep, I need to honor, so I have to be in a minute and a half in about 40 minutes. So, I will leave five sticky notes here on just my thoughts. Two, to answer the questions about should we maintain the services of a consultant, I think yes. And so, I have a little note here that says recruitment firm, I might leave my house of Kate, since she's sitting next to me. At a minimum, I think we should ask them to announce and advertise. I think that between council and staff, we could probably do a lot of the other elements, but my grasp acts would be advertise and announce because they have networks that we just simply won't, we can't. But this is not an Indeed.com that we search, so that's my minimum, but I would support anything else we'd add. And then as far as recruitment firm, I also think it's important to think about the quality of applicants versus the quantity. So, a lot of recruitment firms can say, hey, I'll get 100 applicants. Well, if they're not the kind of applicants that we're looking for, then that doesn't do us any good. So, I would look at maybe if the council move forward with RFP, to add something for the selection process, like show evidence of successful matching of talent desire to talent reflected in applicant pool, something like that. So, let's say council says we want to interest civic engagement, I think that seems like a plausible thing. Have that search firm show evidence that yes, they were successful in finding those traits with that local government, whether it's county or city or whatever. As far as an ad hoc committee goes, I'm supportive either way. I have a slight leaning towards yes, ad hoc, but I really could support that either way. And then the last two things I have are looking at the school districts, a search that they have going on right now. They did a super job creating a website that has all of the information out there. So, I would recommend that council give some direction to staff to create a website that's similar to the school district and have a couple of copies that can pass out if you want to see them. But the rationale would be transparency and trust of the process between employees and the community. So, we can look at that. And then the last thing I have is just really a request and invitation for us to look at having employee and community engagement in this process. I know that would have a lot, you know, maybe not a lot, but several significant touchpoints in that. And the first one is an idea to create a survey for staff and the community to participate in. And this is not just a one-off idea, the school district did a survey. In my job at a public employer, we do surveys a lot for executives and I looked at some of those. And so, really this survey would be, and this actually survey is based off of a police recruit search in Appleton. And Dale helped to get Emily Burden and I a copy of this a couple of months ago. So, I looked at all of these different surveys and I came up with a draft that I proposed to council of, you know, having people indicate if they're inter-hung person, you know, whether we just say internal or if we delineate city, health department, or library. I also think it's important to call out, you know, if they're a department head, because I think we really want to make sure we're hearing from department heads. It's a key partner for the city manager. And then external, you know, if they're from the community at large. And then there's several questions here, lists out the IC and the core competencies for city managers, which I think we would be looking at anyway, so that they know what we're looking for. And then three additional skills or qualities that we would like to see, with the option for other. And then just a small handful of questions, just on, you could send, the council really caution or characteristics that would not integrate well to the city manager. Where do, where does a person think the city manager should focus his or her attention in the first year of a job? What kind of question, what kind of question would you ask? What is a year of successful play? And a special question for employees and department heads? And then any other details that they would want to share about duties, experiences, and characteristics. We will say the Appleton survey had a couple other things that applied to like what new ideas do you want to integrate? I mixed those questions just because I thought this was plenty, but I thought this would be really helpful. And if council decided to go forward with this survey or a survey, I'm more than happy to do the laywork to set it up. And I think we should send it out, set it up soon, so that we can use, start having a window of time to collect information. And then we use this data to inform the position description, our recruitment materials, whether it's an ad hoc committee or a full council, what are our interview questions, what are we screening for, et cetera. So, this is not to tell us what to do, this is an invitation to invite people. We want, what you have to say matters. So, with that, if there's any questions, have them answered, otherwise I've got a speech.
Do you know, could I ask?
Yeah.
Thank you for letting us see you. In the Holden or in the school district, do people actually have the time to submit their ideas? Do they get feedback?
Yeah, so yes, and I think one, it's really helpful for morale in organizations, which I'm not inferring that that's the reason to do it here, but it's people feel like, oh, cool, it's not a set and done thing, that people want to hear my feedback. So, I certainly do. And I could see like people from the chamber and people from our, we have lots of advocacy groups that are interested, and so I think that would be helpful. I'm sorry, the last thing, we have, our city has a great profile that I did recently for the police position. And there's other cities, this is probably like a down the road decision, but I just want to pass this out, just so you can see it. There's other cities that have put together a really neat profile that I think is so inspiring that we can probably add on to the police one and use customized for city manager. But when I look at searches, which I have a lot of experience in my day job doing, I look at it as a two-way street. It's not just, oh, who wants to come work for us, but it's who can we recruit? Who can, how can we potentially take care of the next city manager? And so, what can we do to woo the right applicant pool? So, that I think is a down the road decision, but I'll just pass some of these out.
Thank you.
Okay, I got five of these. Thank you, everybody.
Drive safely.
I guess that question for me and her about surveys, I'm on the board for the Chippewa Valley Montessori Charter School, and we're in the process of hiring a principal. And we did a survey, and it's, we got hundreds of responses. And it's just amazing for a small school like that, getting hundreds of responses and having it be open to staff and community, I think is really key.
Yeah, I really like this idea.
All right, well, we'll get started with Vicky's presentation and then some discussion.
Okay, thank you. So, some of the major tasks entailed in the recruitment process is whether to, obviously to go it alone or to seek out the, some professional assistance from a consultant and/or knowing, obviously, that, you know, staff and HR are here to help council through the process as well. Some of these major tasks include reviewing the current job description, developing the job profile that, the brochure type document that Catherine mentioned, qualification materials, and then establishing the salary for the position, deciding the scope of the recruitment, whether to be internal or external, selecting an interim city manager, if and/or when that in the process it's needed, recruiting candidates, screening and interviewing those candidates, doing the background and reference checks, and then once the, an offer is extended, negotiating those employment terms, and then drafting the employment contract. So, some of the future decisions to be made, not necessarily today, and council president Weld will guide us through that discussion, but developing that profile, qualifications, and salary for the job, reviewing the job description and coming up with those qualifications that you want to see in the next city manager. And then there's a handout, Wisconsin statute 64.09 is a state statute that sets forth minimum requirements with respect to the qualifications for a city manager. Deciding, as I mentioned, the scope of that recruitment, whether it's internal or external, when and where to advertise for the position, and then what process do you want to utilize to receive applications and resumes. Once those applications and resumes come in, then decisions have to be made as far as who narrows that field of candidates. Is that the consultant? Is it a full, the full city council? Is there a subcommittee of the council, a search committee that will, you know, pare that down? And then whether to hold public input sessions. Decisions have to be made as to the number of candidates to bring in for the initial interviews, the number of candidates that you want to see as finalists, and then what type of testing and assessments do you want to do, perform to have, us perform to assess the qualifications for the position. And we in HR do have a management questionnaire that we typically will include with the recruitment. This would be the electronic NeoGov system, but we can have the questions set up in advance so that when applicants submit their application materials, they also have to answer these separate subset of questions. That gives you a good chance to see the writing style and how they, you know, answer the questions that, the traits that you're most looking for in a city manager. And then personality management style, type of assessments can also be performed. Some other future decisions, when it comes to conducting the interviews, who conducts the interviews, where, and what type of interviews? We typically have held panel interviews, but you know, how many panels do you want to have? Conducting the background and reference checks, who performs that function? And then once you have a candidate that you want to extend an offer to, who makes that employment offer and then engages in those contract negotiations with them? With respect to whether to create an ad hoc committee, search committee of a full council, this would take action by resolution at a regular council meeting. So, the resolution would specify the scope of the authority that that search committee would have, the duration that the committee would be around for, and then what is required to be a member of that committee. With respect to the scope of the search committee, some of the functions that they could perform to streamline the process is that they could work with the consultant to draft and review the job, that job profile, the advertisement for the position, the job description, and then that employment contract. As far as the potential authority of the search committee, that would depend on whether this is a committee that has delegated responsibilities, so you're delegating certain tasks to them that they would make that decision and not have to bring it back to the full council? Or is this just an advisory committee that would, you know, make certain decisions, but then bring it back to the full council for action, their recommendations? Set forth, a typical external nationwide recruitment typically takes four to six months. That's probably being a little bit optimistic, but looking at a six-month time period, this is what it would look like as far as starting the recruitment process and then when to potentially have a city manager on board. And even with a four to six month timeframe, July, August is probably somewhat realistic. So, it would definitely then entail having to look at appointing an interim city manager.
Well, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Is it, I mean, is it Dale through? Is it me? Are you set certain?
Yeah, I'm, I'm planning on having my last eight or something.
Okay. Sorry. I didn't ask that before. You're really worried. There's a chance it moves like a bullet, so we forgot. Not planning on it at this time, or?
Please, I ask questions at any time. Any other questions before?
The idea with that, Andrew, is that the, you know, it minimizes the infringement time in the whole piece, a couple of months, and we'll have, again, the CIP and other things.
Some of the potential benefits of hiring a consultant, they can perform that active search, you know, on your behalf. They can update job description, develop all the recruitment brochures, announce the position, assist with setting the salary for the position, receive and process all the applications, screen and narrow the applications and resumes, develop interview questions, perform those assessments and testing, develop the interview process, participate in the interview process, offer some sample contracts for council's consideration for the, for the city manager, and then conduct reference background checks. And there's an asterisk next to those tasks that HR could, you know, certainly perform as part of the process to keep that, you know, that cost down.
I have another question.
Uh-huh.
Are recruitment firms pretty much all the same or are they different? Like, I just don't know, we might have a three, three, five or six, and if there really is a difference between us picking different firms.
I think that kind of comes down to how you write the scope, you know, with the RFP and when we, I wasn't around in 2012 when the last, you know, the last nationwide recruitment was done. But with respect to the RFP, there were 11 firms that submitted his.
Oh, wow. Okay. I was there, but I can't remember how we were talking, so, okay.
So, those asterisk items are ones that we can take over in HR, but also HR can provide support with respect to coordinating those candidate travel arrangements, bringing people in to interview and tour the community, arrange for and prepare the facilities where the interviews are going to be held, and then provide that personnel and transportation for the community tours and the site visits. So, those are something definitely that didn't do that.
If you have a recommendation, how do you, right off the bat, carve these things out unless you felt differently? So, the recruitment firm knows that, you know, the staff level, we would do these things. But if some of the other ones are on page nine, or even later after you give the horse back and negotiate with the firm and say, well, how much would it cost us if, you know, each other agrees with that? And one of those is perhaps an easy one, is the criminal background check and the credit check. I mean, you do that for hundreds and hundreds of people anyway, and so, you know, that's something that can be done at the local level.
Have a question?
Mm-hmm.
Are the assessments and testing, what would that, like MMPI or?
So, for, for, well, not just supervisor positions, but we typically administer something called a PEP test. So, it's a paper assessment tool that looks at the traits, you know, and behaviors and how you respond to those to, kind of, and it's broken down into certain categories, so it kind of gives you a good picture and a percentage, you know, of, you know, who would they, should you have concerns or inquire further about these types of issues like, you know, theft, drug attitudes, you know, that kind of, those types of questions. And then we also have a management styles inventory where it's, it kind of, you read a fact scenario and then you have to put on a scale, like how you would typically respond to something, and it shows what your style of management is, and, you know, right, from like a rigid manager to a country club style manager, that's, it's just anything goes type of management manager, so.
To answer, yes, it could be an MMPI, it could be some other personality type testing. The more you get into that, you get into medical testing, you have issues and things like that.
Like screen testing.
Yeah, you gotta be careful, you know, how far you can go with some of those. But it can also be sometimes like an in-basket exercise, where you see how somebody prioritizes things in a type. It can be a written exercise of some sort. One of the things that we would recommend is a thing called a management questionnaire, and it would be a series of questions that you would ask the candidates beforehand to provide you a written answer on, you know, so what is your philosophy on community engagement or what's your experience? I mean, it could be a wide variety of things. The nice thing about a management assessment, a questionnaire that is required with the resume and the application and all of that, is one, it will screen the candidates, only those that are really serious about the job, because there's a lot of work that has to go into that. Two, it lets you see their writing sample, you know, their writing style and their writing skills. And three, it gives you some insights into their philosophy and approach to different things, so that when you're making the selection to see who you want to invite in the interviews, it gives you some different perspectives than just their, so, you know, that's one that we would encourage. You could do a speaking, you know, exercise, where, you know, if somebody's given a scenario and they're given 15 minutes to prepare for it, and they, you know, have to do a little speech, or it could be a speech that they have lots of time to prepare for. There's a whole variety of types of assessment tools, which you may or may not choose to work into the process to help you, you know, assess different skills or traits or characteristics when you can address.
We had a management assessment included as part of the recruitment for the police chief position, and there were nine questions, so I mean, a lot of time went into preparing the answers to those questions. The council member with the camera have a question.
Those six services that you have asked for, seven, there are six. Seven, we can't count there. How much time do you and your staff have to do all of those? Or do you prioritize those in terms of which ones would cost the most for us typically to assign to the recruiting firm? And which ones do you feel that you and your staff could do the best job?
I mean, we have a lot of templates that we can use, because we do do all this with respect to our, you know, any active recruitment that we have going on, so, you know, like the background check, we contracted an outside company that does those criminal, educational, and credit background checks, so, I mean, that's, we send a link to the applicant, they fill in their information, it goes right to the background check company, and it's not much work on our part.
So, you're suggesting that those that you say that could be performed internally, you want to do all?
Sure.
So, I'm wondering, in a typical search, are there kind of layers of discernment, so that you might do, y'all send your resume and response, and then you go to another level of maybe written documentation to further separate, and then you bring in maybe one or two? Is that typically how it works?
I think we typically request all that information upfront.
And all of that happens as part of the initial?
Right, just to screen them out. I mean, it saves everybody time if you want to get those that are the most serious.
So, you really come up with your guns right out there?
Right.
This is what we wanted, or we're still waiting to?
Yeah, when we did the last recruitment for police chief, I mean, there were probably six or seven candidates that didn't even bother to fill out the management assessment, so it's like, obviously they weren't that interested, so yeah, it made it pretty quick and to focus on, here's the candidates that are serious.
Well, can I just say that while those would be out there, the firm, depending on how we do this, will help narrow down sort of what we're looking for. Maybe they bring that to the ad hoc committee. But I think it was 10 initial candidates that he saw that were provided from the search room, saying, please, be your criteria. And then we narrowed that down to five, and then I think we ended up, we ended up interviewing five, I think we ended up interviewing five. Did a second round of interviews, you know, for each side.
Yeah, I'm just, it's. I think our attorney can assist us on this, but it seems that, if I remember the process correctly, that once the, the number of interviews occur, then there's disclosure involved.
Right, and it gets to six or fewer, then it's determined to be, I think it's six or fewer and a private fewer, one or the other. But yes, when you get to that point, then it's either when the council calls them finalists or you reach a certain number and it gets five or six, then they're by default considered finalists, and then they have to be released from a public records perspective.
Mr. Nick, anything else you wanted to supplement?
Anything, five or six.
Yeah. Any other questions before we?
Well, maybe. So, I was thinking about this ad hoc committee, so I kind of used the asterisk thing, I was thinking maybe the ad hoc could help a lot with the asterisk things as well, especially if the ad hoc has, you know, a staff member on it. I mean, for sure, like the background checks, that seems like a no-brainer that the city would just do that, but some other, the job description and things like that, seems like the bad, and he could do a lot of those too, right?
He could. The, right, I would suggest that, I mean, the job description and the, certainly the job description and maybe even the profile, and maybe even the recruitment for sure, you know, to the extent that you're hiring a consulting firm and that firm, you know, specializes in recruiting, you know, city managers, that that might be helpful for them to guide you. that that might be helpful for them to guide you, you know, with those conversations. The, you know, interview questions, the assessments, that was going to depend on whether or not, you know, they might bring some different ideas to the table that we wouldn't be familiar with from a staff perspective, so. And keep in mind, all of those are negotiable. And you can put them on the table, see what you get for pricing. You know, if you like it and it's reasonable, you know, then, you know, just have them do it all for you, with the exception of maybe the background checks. And again, those things that we've already said, I think, are better suited at the local level, the organizing, the groom, and things like that. But if, you know, if the prices come in, you know, high, then perhaps as well, what would happen if, you know, you have staff do this? It gets more complicated the more you have staff do, and, you know, I mean, so in one sense, it's a little easier if the consultant is just the primary point person for you and you're not, you know, dividing the meetings and things between staff and the consultant.
Does that make sense?
And that consultant is so worried about how it'll come.
Is that? Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
It just means that, right, there's a little more travel involved and consultants, depending on where they're coming from.
And then just some advantages and disadvantages of retaining a consultant versus having staff assist council with these functions. You know, the consultant can reach out to a larger field of candidates and have independent perspective. Obviously, the disadvantage is the cost. Typical, average costs are between 20 and 35,000.
Plus expenses.
Right, plus expenses. In the 2012 recruitment, the two bids that were considered, where the consultant was selected from, I think one came in at 19,000 and one came in at 20,000. So it's a minimum probably of 20. But then the consultant also doesn't live with the outcome of the search. Staff, obviously, it helps keep the cost down. Staff can do a really good job with selling the community. But they won't have, you know, we wouldn't have that. We don't do executive searches, you know, quite as often as probably an executive search firm does so that they would just have some better tools at their disposal. And it can be awkward recruiting for your supervisor. Dale mentioned expenses. Here's some estimated expenses of a recruitment process. The advertising, the brochures, bringing candidates in. You mentioned, you know, you thought that there was 10 individuals that were interviewed. You know, figure it could be about $1,000 a candidate by the time you pay airfare, hotel expenses, rental car, and meals. So the recruitment, the consultant fees, and then the facility charges for wherever we, council decides to hold the interviews, and then with the successful candidate relocation expenses.
Okay. Is any questions in regards to the materials first, before we get started into the discussion? Then we get to like, come back to anything that you have questions to. We'll be going back and forth as we move forward. Obviously, you know, this will involve some time and some work on our part. And I know that the community too is, you know, going to want to be a part of this along with staff. And so I think the goal for all of us is to assure the community and staff and all of us that this will be a smooth transition. And I think that, I think that's a very attainable goal. And, you know, certainly with the help of Vicky and Dale and everyone else in HR and Steve and actually some of our elder council members that have gone through this process. So we will also look to you as well. Right, experience, I agree, a much better word. So anyway, I think that, you know, certainly, this is something that we can really work well together on and certainly have a good experience, you know, when it's all done. So we have some decisions to make, and we'll take it at, as Dale mentioned earlier, this will be at your pace as to what you're comfortable with. And again, the more discussion and questions, you know, the better. So, you know, the first question then is, you know, do we, do we want to have a staff-led internal search? Or would we like to have a national consultant-led search? Or I guess we could have a national staff-led search too. Is there any discussion there?
At this juncture, we're trying to position ourselves in the best possible way of hiring a consultant.
So we're all in favor of a consultant?
Okay, your first decision.
Do we need to see a motion in a second in the votes?
I don't know, see, is consensus okay on that? So, all right, that's enough direction.
Okay, consensus is in that we would like to move ahead with a national consultant.
So do you want, I'd like to ask now this point. I'm prepared for that, but so the, this, when it talks about what the ups and the downs, are there very obvious places where you can move from a consultant to the internal? Because when you begin talking about the advantages of a player and our region and all those things, I mean, obviously, it would be easier. So if you go with the consultant, is it typically front-end, I mean, it's all led by that?
Typically, actually, where staff would likely come back in would be at the end for the actual interviews. So one of the things you, I would recommend that you put in is a tour of the community. And many times, that can be, you know, best done with staff, right? So you can have somebody from staff that will actually conduct that tour and show them around and, you know, help sell the community. And staff, it goes back to those three things that we kind of carved out and said staff should do. So, you know, organizing the local facility, getting the food so it's there, you know, just making sure that it's, you know, that the facility works well for everybody and that the agenda's put out, and everybody knows where to go and when and all that, so.
Just trying to get my head around, so this consultant is really managing all the flow and assembling information and all of that stuff. And it's only once you're really down to the end does it become very important.
Right, I think you're fine that the consultant will be reaching out.
Out to us.
Yeah, to us.
At the process.
Right, so to the extent that they need that local contact and local support, you know, that, you know, that they, you know, we would certainly be there for them.
So, you know, the next two questions, I guess we're gonna, you know, one will depend on the other, and then we can get into more detail if we decide to push this to the next question after that. But what is the council's interest in setting up an ad hoc committee comprised of, you know, whatever number of council members that we agreed to? Or would council prefer to leave this up to us as a body to work together on? And then if we decide to go with the committee, again, as Vicky mentioned, what decision-making ability are we offering them or allowing them or delegating to them? So, any thoughts on whether you'd like us to, as a council body, facilitate this search and hiring, or would you prefer to see a committee?
Would set up a committee?
Well, I think we would go through the same process, as I understand it, as we do with our appointments committee.
Would be set up a committee-wide?
No. Wow. That wasn't.
Because that, because that would like the university and.
Don't we just decide?
Yes, as I understand it, we, you know, as a council, we could set the number of participants of the committee and representation that we'd like to see from the various groups or stakeholders. Does I?
Yeah, so, I guess, if you're, so the thing with the ad hoc committee is you have to decide its scope and authority. And as we were putting this presentation together, I guess the thought process was more of the, if there's work that the council would want to delegate to somebody else to do on their behalf. So, you know, working on the job description or the ad or, you know, some, just some of that wordsmithing kind of stuff. And so, you know, it's really a way of helping the council with the mechanics of just getting all the materials together and so everybody's comfortable with it. The consultant, you know, you saw the, I mean, at some point, there'll be a nice glossy brochure, there'll be a job description, you know, there'll be a salary recommendation, and perhaps some surveys that have to be done. And so the question is really with the consultant. And ultimately, as a council, you have to make decisions and approve different steps along the way. So do you, you know, do you want to do that as a body of the whole? You know, or do you want to have some subset of yourself that is taking some of that work from the whole body? That doesn't preclude what you mentioned. If there's a, at a different point in time, you want, you know, some community involvement to do, you know, some very specific pieces of it, you could certainly add that in at any point in time. This was being proposed more just with the nuts and the bolts and the grinding of the process itself that you have to eventually approve and be on board with at the council.
I think it's hard to get everybody together consistently. I think that was task force or ad hoc group was better than.
But before we get into that, as far as.
Just tired.
Yeah, as far as making decisions today, are there any decisions that you would feel comfortable as a body now making together before we create an ad hoc committee? And then again, the question will be, is there delegation?
I have two questions. One, is there an optimal size or makeup of this ad hoc committee? If it gets too big, it gets kind of billowy. If it gets too small, you're not getting enough runs to do the work. I mean, what size are we looking at?
I guess, I don't know, we haven't done that before, so I'm not, I mean, we haven't worked with that, and.
Are you saying that you've always done it as a whole council?
Yeah, because really, I mean, the first step is getting the consultant here, right? And so hopefully, maybe tonight, we can make some decisions about the RFP and just get it out there so that, you know, so that we get the clock rolling to get a consultant here with you. And then from there, the consultant will, you know, lead that process very actively with proposals for things for you to react to or, you know, give feedback to. But to answer your question directly, I would say three or four at the most.
So there's never been an ad hoc committee in the past? There's only been a full council decision?
Yeah, working as a body of the whole with the.
Well, I guess I could go either way on the ad hoc committee. I think it does seem to be pretty hard for us to all get together, so it makes, maybe I'm leaning more towards that. But I think we should get the RFP in a place where we can send it out tonight. And I also would like to make a decision on this thing that Catherine brought up so that we can be putting this, if we decide to do this, we can put this survey out to the community as soon as possible too.
Although, I'd clearly would work on the survey, maybe.
That's what I think too. I would like the survey, but I think that there could be some wordsmithing around it, especially if it's going to the, like, there should be a different one for internal and one for the larger community perhaps.
So if we can bring it back to that discussion, then with the national consultant and the RFP part of this process, are we comfortable with putting that out together? And then are we, would you like to see the initial ask include everything that's on that, more or less, that menu of services? Yeah, so page.
Page five, the top of page five.
So we could just, you know, send out the RFP, and then after we get responses, we can.
Oh, because I doubled, sorry.
We can edit the services that we would need or expect from them so that if it comes down to cost, then there is some negotiation there with the services that would be provided. Or we can, you know, send it with the items that are not asked, you know, have asterisks with it and ask for just those things and plan on staff completing the other items. Or we can pick which ones we want to include.
I think we include the full list and then negotiate from there.
Andrew, if I could just clarify, on that last one, there's reference checks slash background checks, and there's also the criminal and educational. What we would propose is that we would be doing the, it's basically a credit check, an educational check, and a criminal background check. My suggestion would be that any reference checking is done by the consultant so that it stays independent and so.
What about the assessment and testing and developing of the interview process? I would think that those could be done here without any sacrifice.
And that's the, like, I think we talked that maybe the consultant has some other thoughts on, you know, we do the PEP test and that management styles inventory. Maybe there's a better assessment tool that the consultant might recommend.
And that would be all part of their presentation to us when the RFPs come back. And at that time, we can decide whether or not we feel comfortable with their testing and process. And if we don't, then we'll bring it in-house, that part of it.
I don't know if now is the time to say this in terms of the RFP, but I would like it if we could make sure that all the candidates are ICMA certified. I think that would probably be wise, and it would also communicate to executive search crews that we're not looking for someone who used to manage a hospital or, you know, we're looking for somebody with a particular kind of expertise and experience.
So that will come when you're, the job profile. And so you'll have your job description and your profile that will say, and the consultant will lead you through that conversation to say, do you want an undergraduate degree, master's degree, what fields? Are there certifications that you want like ICMA? So there's a whole list of things that will be developed about that.
So the proposal itself would be, as y'all should have a sample of it. And then on page, page five of that RFP, up at the top there, where it talks about scope of work, all these additional, as I understand, all these additional items that would be inserted there. And then everything else following it would be also part of the RFP and what we would expect submitted back from there.
Are we, are we going to include everything, even including the background check?
No, we'll pull out, we'll pull out the criminal background and educational and credit check. And then we will note in the scope of services that the bottom part of page five or I think the staff will do. We'll just take that criminal, educational, and credit piece and move it down to the bottom of page five. And all of page five gets put on there saying, here's what the firm is expected to do, and here's what the staff would do.
Then once the quotes come back, we can look at, okay, do we want to parse some of that out and reassign that to HR to bring the cost down to a more manageable?
Do you have any thoughts about what Catherine said about, like, specifying quality over quantity? Quality over quantity and like specifying some different qualities that we're looking for? Like, you know, value of certain things, that sort of thing? Like, how would you do that in the RFP?
So, the. So, part of that would be perhaps in either the project description or again, the, I guess that's probably where you put it, in the project description, kind of saying, this is kind of what you're looking for. Maybe a little bit of it sprinkled in, the scope of work. The other way to approach it is to, because when these come back, they'll, I'm going to say we have 10 proposals. There will be an evaluation form, and we gave you an example of what that, you know, looks like to look at. And each of you will receive all 10 proposals. And each of you will then receive this evaluation form. And you will get to grade these, you know, proposals based upon what you feel is, you know, important. So the, you can tease out or encourage in the RFP things that you'd like them to emphasize. The other way to do it is to see if they've touched, but, I mean, if they promote themselves in a way with their proposal in ways you go, wow, that firm. um, in ways you go, wow, that, that firm really gets what, you know, that firm, what they do, the way they're proposing it to do aligns with what I'd like to see them do. And then you, you would grade them, you know, much higher than you would, you know, somebody else. So, part of that is, um, you know, if you tell them exactly what you need to hear, then they're gonna tell you what you said that you needed to hear. The other is, hey, make us a proposal about how you're gonna bring us the best city manager, and what are you gonna do with that? And then they'll make you proposals and pitches with their approach, and you'll be able to see which approach you like or which one you don't. So, there are two different techniques for going about that. I don't know that one is better or worse, but, um, so, the, um, certainly we could put some language in the.
Kind of give a little bit of a guideline to.
Sure. So we could certainly in the project description, um, add something about the, um, you know, our strategic values. And, um, uh.
If they just read the widget table, are these on, and then.
Right, right.
If they go a little bit more elaborate, like, we want to do a search that meets what your values are and actually show it in their.
Right, in, in their proposal, too, right. So, you know, we could do is just something alike what, I mean, we could reach out to Catherine and see where her language was, but, you know, some, you know, the city is engaged in a process, you know, that, um, uh, is inclusive and sees, we, we could put something in there that teases that out just a little bit.
Yeah, I, I think you make a good point, though, too, Dale, about, um, kind of letting them, like.
Let them.
Yeah, so if you can find like some kind of happy medium, that would be really good.
Alright, okay.
So, timing, um, still on the RFP, um, if, if that's.
I had a slide.
I guess we're all in agreement with the RFP and, well, fully loaded, and then we'll, we'll work on it as it comes back, other than the last testing, uh, background. The, uh, so right now, the way we scheduled our meeting for, in two weeks was with the idea that maybe we, we would, or maybe we wouldn't be ready, to go ahead and, uh, move forward with the RFP. So with, now knowing that we are gonna move forward with the RFP, and I, as I understand it, it's normally is a three to four weeks.
Yeah, so we got, we, this is the, we've looked at kind of what happens if we can get the RFP out this week, or if it had to wait till the next meeting. Um, oops, I handed them all out, I didn't save any. So you can see what the, the.
Got a little eager.
Yeah, what the timeline would look like, so, um, you know, if, if we can get this out this week, um, that's the, kind of the left-hand side. The, uh, the week of the twenty-third, you would be reviewing and scoring the proposals. And, um, uh, then at the, uh, on April first, uh, the council would actually be, you know, selecting the, uh, um, you know, the consultant that you want to bring on board.
I think, yeah, we're on the right-hand side.
I'm looking the wrong way. Yep, okay.
Based on today to move forward, yeah.
March ninth, yeah. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, a couple of decisions then in that regard is if, if we still feel like we want to meet in two weeks, um, to start working on maybe creating a committee, or if that's the route we go. But know, and knowing too, though, that we will have all the RFPs back and ready for some sort of council, um, involvement, you know, that first weekend in March, and at which time, um, if, if we're comfortable with this timeframe and this pace, we would, we would maybe hopefully select an RFP, you know, by the ninth or sometime in that time period.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but the, the actual forming the committee has to go to council, though, first, right, before the committee meets, or could they be meeting in?
Okay, a creation of a committee would need.
A resolution.
So that's part of an upcoming business agenda where you consider, adopt a resolution. Creating that committee, identifying its scope, hours, duration, ad hoc, so it's only determined as, as the hiring of the new city manager, um, and then appointing its members.
Can we, can we decide on that today? I mean, no?
No, we're not obligated for that.
No, no, I mean, I, can we make the decision to send that to council today? Like, for another council meeting?
Yeah, giving us direction to, to work on such a resolution.
Right.
Well, could we, um, use, cause we're gonna meet again in two weeks?
When's the, when's the, when the doodle poll decided?
Yeah, well, we're still waiting on some responses back, but so far, it's looking like Tuesday, a work session after our meeting on Tuesday, um, February twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Um, so at which time then, we would, would be after the legislative part of that meeting. So then we would have to vote it on the first meeting in March, is that correct? If, if.
Or have a special meeting just to do that.
Right.
Oh.
Well.
Should we make the decision today? Shouldn't we?
Well, I would like.
Do you want more time for that?
I would like Catherine here, cause she has a lot of experience.
She said she'd go either way.
Well, making, yes, I'm fine with saying we need an ad hoc, but talking about the scope for the committee and things like that, I guess that would, like.
Yeah, cause you have to decide the scope, and then you also have to, they say, they get their authority. And are they just, are they just reviewing and then bringing it back to the council whole, or are you actually delegating certain responsibilities that they have sole authority to do on behalf of the city council?
Yeah, so big decisions. And I'd rather do that here than on the full. You think you got that? I feel like I don't, I want like, for, I, I want advisory authority. So I, I know the answer that I would give for that one, but I agree that maybe there, like, as far as the scope, we need a little bit more time.
So one of the things with the advisory capacity is in, in, in one sense, that perhaps adds time to the process. Because, you know, you have to build in time to have the, the subcommittee work on things, and the consultant will be working with the subcommittee, and then it'll come back to the full board and they have to do it versus the, so the consultant has to work with two groups then. It, it might save some time, uh, if the, um, you know, if there aren't many changes to what comes out of the subcommittee. But if the subcommittee works on it, and then it goes to the full, and then you work on it again, you know, you're kind of duplicating the efforts. Yes, Jill?
Through the conversation, my thinking has really moved to, it, the, the consultant almost acts as an advisory ad hoc.
Yes.
So that we only have to be gathered at the important times, and then broadening the scope of who's interacting happens in the interview process. We can put anything in that we want. Um, I, I'm starting to feel much more about just, um, the process.
Oh, I was, not doing the ad hoc, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because the, the consultant is our ad hoc.
We, we could still involve with every.
I see.
And they can send things out to each of you and say, here, take a look at this, get you prepared for it. They can send things out to you, and individually, you can give feedback, and then they can consolidate that and bring it back to your final votes.
That, that makes sense to me, especially like, if we put together a committee, and let's say we did want to have people in the community, there would be a long process of getting applications, review, you know what I mean? Like, I feel like, we, it might be simplest, just to do as you're suggesting and have.
Well, yeah, if we want to use the community as part of the interview process, we can.
We can do that, and we can have a consultant kind of facilitate that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with having the full council. I mean, I, I think we actually, you know, when we, when we meet, like, after our Tuesday meetings, like, I think that's a relatively reliable time for people, because we never know how long our meetings are gonna go anyway.
Or was prepared.
Yeah, um, so.
We can order pizza.
Yeah, I'll notice that.
There's gonna be dinner, there're gonna be dinner meetings.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Yeah, that's okay.
So the consensus, no had, no committee, and full council will make all decisions and, and the hiring and search process? Okay, so, um.
Is that consensus?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're, we're all in consensus, alright, um. So what about, do you think we're still on track? Do we want to aim for that meeting in two weeks for the twenty-fifth?
What would we?
I know that, uh, David's gone, um, and Andrew's gone too, so, um.
We can zoom you in?
What do we need to do about meeting in two weeks?
Well, I think.
Want to work on the RFP, right?
Well, no, it's done, it'll be.
We won't have anything back yet, so it just depends on if you're comfortable with waiting until we get the RFPs to see what their present, their, uh, proposals are, and, and then decide on, on that before we start working on job description and, and such. Then we, we probably could wait until that, uh, first meeting in March.
Yeah, let's do that, yeah.
Well, cause we can be doing independently.
Sure, maybe we'll, yeah, we'll have some.
I might have a thought between.
So, um, we'll have the RFPs back by the first meeting in March?
Um, the responses are due, as you look at the, so the, um, um, so the week of, the first week of March, you'll be reviewing and scoring the proposals. And so generally, we would have you do that individually, and then you submit the, your results, and that would be compiled, and it would be the, the meeting on the ninth, that, uh, you'd actually go through, probably, um.
I think on this, right?
No, I don't think so. Direction today, so we, we'll have it sent out here. The, uh, uh, so the, on the ninth of March, that first meeting in March, you will, um, either select, or you might be deciding to, um, you know, bring a few in the interview, which is not a bad idea, um, because, you know, unless there's one that's just really obvious, you might be down to two or three, ask them to come in and, you know, meet with them and ask questions and, and do that. But we, you really won't know that until you've seen the proposals and, um, uh, and, you know, if there's one obvious, really clear winner, you know, from your results, and the price is good, then, I mean, that's who you're gonna go with. If, if, if you're down to a couple, you may want to, to interview, you know, one or two. But that's, that's the conversation that you'll have on, on March ninth, right?
So what option?
I have a question.
Sure.
We will be individually reviewing, the, scoring these proposals independently.
Yes.
And then sit down and do it, this group, so, uh, there's no, if I'm out of town, there's no, if I can get ahold of those proposals.
They would be emailed to you.
They will all be on, oh, okay.
Yep, so we would email them to you with the scoring sheets, and then you s- you score them and send it back in, that all gets tabulated. So really, if, if you think about, um, you're, you're getting a behind-the-scenes peek of what happens on, on your consent agenda, you accrue purchases all the time. And anytime it's a professional service, this is the process that brings forth that recommendation. Because there's been a team of people that evaluated it, scored it, and based on that recommendation, then that's what, you know, is coming forward for, for your, you know. But I don't think, yeah. Steve, something you want to add?
Just a reminder that when you're doing it, just send it back to that one point of contact, for example, with a new victory or something.
Or purchasing.
Yeah, not, not reply all.
Otherwise, you get a, over meeting.
Right.
Nice one, it's nice when there's, there're BCCs, that we don't have to worry about that, that one guy.
We would remind you, you know, also to just send it back, you know, individually.
So are we comfortable not having any meeting prior to the, to the ninth and tenth, and having any discussion at all, and then on the, on the ninth or tenth? I guess it'd be.
Are we gonna see the RFPs before they get sent out?
We'll get them on the.
No, like the actual document?
On the second, we would get them on the second, and we would score them that week, or?
I mean, like the act, like the city is.
We, we can send you the final, right, I mean, so we, we can send you a copy of the final RFP that goes out, so you see it.
Okay.
No, so, um, so no meetings between now and the first meeting in, in March, um, and at that time, we would be ready to select a consultant, without any meeting prior.
Unless we need to do an interview.
Hmm?
Unless we need to interview a couple.
Yeah, you might not select, cause you might decide you want to, to interview those.
Right, yeah, I'm sorry, yep. Okay.
Could we meet on the ninth rather than the tenth, because I have to, well, it'll be easier for me, I'm not sure about for other people, but. So we're only gonna meet one of those two nights, right?
Mm-hmm.
March ninth or tenth.
I'm actually gonna miss both of those. I trust you guys.
If we meet on the ninth, do we meet before our council meeting, so it doesn't get so late?
That would be the recommendation, I guess, to, you know, meet at five or something.
So you, when you're asking Jeremy, who's, you, you wanted it after the ninth, the seventh meeting?
Yeah, I mean, or we could do it before, I mean, I have to work right until five, but, on, on days, but.
Otherwise, would we have to take any legislative action on the tenth? I mean, could, are you around later that week, or are you going the whole week?
I'll be home on Thursday. Or if we get them back before, do we, could we meet before then, or then everyone's gone, or?
Yeah, well, they'll, I mean, we'll have the proposals to you on the first, but, so the idea was to give you a week to review them and score them.
Yeah.
Cause hopefully, you get a lot of them, and, you know, to meet each one carefully takes some time.
We've already got thr- well, three inquiries by email.
Oh, really?
Oh, sure.
Well, that's exciting.
That, that's another thing just to keep in mind, in the field of people who actually do this business, I mean, I mean, it's a, it's a very narrow industry. Most of the ones that you'll be, you know, receiving, they, they already know, so they're just waiting for the RFP to respond.
Just waiting.
Waiting in the wings.
So the direction would come on the ninth from us in the work session to maybe seek out some potential interviews and?
Do we decide on the ninth or the tenth, right?
Are you, huh?
Do we decide on the ninth or the?
Well, we hadn't, well, we kind of had, well, Emily will be gone, David will be gone, and Jeremy would not be able to do it on the tenth, is that right?
Yeah, cause I just have to be in race scene for, for work the next day, so I want to get to come there at night.
On the tenth.
So.
You have to be racing on Wednesday?
On Wednesday at nine.
What do you think? Could we do it like, uh, like the Friday before or something?
Well, that's what I was wondering.
The Thursday, the fifth?
If you did a.
Or Thursday, the twelfth?
I could do the fifth or the, the twelfth.
Yeah, I could do the fifth or the twelfth.
The fifth would work better for me, if we're talking about me.
That would just give us three days or four days to re, to score, which, I guess if you're all comfortable with that.
Um, could we do, if we're gonna do the fifth, could we do it like after the work day?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't, I can't do it till, like, a little before.
Five o'clock?
Yeah, five o'clock would be great.
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Our first dinner meeting?
What day, I'm sorry, what day was the second?
So we're looking at Thursday, March fifth, um, to meet at approximately five o'clock, um.
To select RFP.
So I'm just looking at that, I, I, I like that, I mean, anything we can do to, uh, to, I mean, keep, keep this moving along. I think if you want to meet on the, the evening of the fifth, um, rather than having the RFPs back to staff on the twenty-eighth, we might change that to the twenty-sixth, and that way, it gives us a day or two to kind of get, uh, stuff out to you. And that way, you, you can get it to you, say, on the twenty-seventh, that gives you the weekend, right, to work on it. And if you get it back to us by the, by the fourth, the morning of the fourth, the night of the third, we can get that compiled and organized for a meeting on the fifth.
You don't think that's rushing it too much? I mean, if, I think with our typical RFP process, purchasing mentioned that it's, it's usually six to eight weeks, and we, the last time we did the RFP in two thousand twelve, it was four weeks. I mean, do we only want to give two weeks, is that, I mean?
One, two, that's three weeks.
The three?
Yep, that's three weeks.
It's less than two weeks.
Yeah, if it gets out on Thursday, you have one, two, oh, yes, right, if, if it's due on the twenty-sixth, yeah.
If somebody is really well qualified, and if it's this quick, they, we might miss out on getting some submissions from consultants that.
Yeah.
By not allowing enough time.
We could go back to the idea of the twelfth.
Yeah, we could.
And then, um, that would put us in. Are you still on the scene?
Oh, we got the thirteen.
Yes. Oh, no, wait. Whole worker trading on the twelfth in council. Poll worker training on the twelfth in council chambers at five thirty.
We could meet here.
Yeah, we would meet up here.
When are you coming back from the scene?
Maybe I was gonna be down there through that weekend, but I could change that.
If you wanna go back to the meeting.
Return on the fifteenth?
Is it me?
You what?
I'll be driving.
Oh, okay. Well.
I can be back here by the fifteenth, that's not, that's not an issue.
Yep, fifteen.
I just shortened my vacation.
Yeah, well, we need six to give direction.
Yep, you'll have to have six, you'll have to have six votes at a legislatively properly announced meeting to actually select the consultants.
So, David.
Yeah, I'm a little confused.
On what?
On the dates.
Neither Nick or I would be able to do that. Let's look at the week of the sixteenth.
But that's what I was thinking, can we push it back and then maybe that would give it.
Yeah.
But we can give them more time with our fee then. I didn't realize that even that timeline is so much shorter than what we need.
Yeah, might as well get a good.
Can we do a doodle for that week of the sixteen? Cause that's a really, the RFP is like a really important, we should all be there.
Sure.
Yeah, selecting, selecting the consultants is important, you know.
I wanna make sure that Catherine also and David are back.
So, the sixteenth through the nineteenth will include those four dates in the doodle?
That's great.
Okay.
Perfect.
So, what are the responses doing?
Are we changing the date? Are we still trying to set it on the fourteenth?
No, we'll push those out another week then to the, to the sixth or, I mean, we'll add more time under when the responses are due.
And then.
So, the doodle is for the actual selection of the RFP? Or is that?
Yes. So, what we would do is, is, you know, we'll probably have them do on the sixth. You'll get the week of the ninth to review and then there'll be a meeting the week of the sixteenth.
The nineteenth, yes, please invite a commission.
That one worked for me either, the nineteenth.
Well, you'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the consultant, you know, a consultant that does this sort of regular business will come to you pretty quickly with a profile that they've already started to fill in. They'll have a template that they use and, you know, there's language that, you know, we already have, you know, from previous searches, at least it'll be the foundation, you know, from which to have the, you know, the further conversation on. I guess to answer your question, David, not really.
So.
Desire qualifications.
To piggyback on that, that idea that of capturing any community vision or desires by a survey.
So, that's a, so that's a really good point, so if that survey, to the extent that you want to incorporate information from that survey into your work for the job description or the, probably more in terms of the profile or kind of the traits that you're looking for, it would be good to get that out. So, so that might be something, that would be something that could be a good thing to work on. So, if you, so, so if you have, you, so, we have that doodle, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's set for next week?
Two weeks.
In two weeks. Why don't, why don't we have that be the agenda item, the meeting in two weeks, which is you're settling on what you want this survey to look like. We can get the tools queued, you know, queued up for how it would actually be, you know, utilized. That way you'd have those, some of those results back as you start working with the consultants.
Okay, that's a good idea.
It would be interesting to see if we're all the same.
The twelfth.
Uh, yes. I went through your email and got that was just when it was.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we should have at least six then.
Okay. I like that.
Okay.
Was there a timeframe on the twenty-third?
What's that?
It'll be after the meeting.
Yeah, after, after the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, after the meeting.
I will not be there, cause that's the Valley, Chippewa Valley Rally. I'm the only, sole representative of the city that's gonna hang in there and go do that, so.
Way to represent.
Yeah. It'll be a long day. You guys are still here when I get back, you've done too much.
Yeah.
They do such a, I was really impressed with their social time afternoon.
Yeah.
But that's a conversation and we'll get that noticed, you can do that, Vicki will have the, you know, both setups and tools or possible ways of getting that, you know, collected and.
So, looking at page four then Dale and Vicki, seem like we're still in line with what we thought as far as the timeline goes and still definitely develop a profile, job description in March, maybe towards the end. Yep, and then April, May.
Let me ask you this, as we go to that meeting on the week of the sixteenth. I guess this would be some administrative discretion, but would, would you have interest in meeting with, say, the top two or three firms that, that, you know, win the points? In other words, you've gone through it, you've gotten the scores, we get it back. I'm thinking in terms of time, what I wouldn't want to have happen is you meet, you're looking at all on paper and you go, boy, I really wish I could ask these people about this or ask them about that. We could queue it up so that they're available by phone, maybe that's it, maybe it's just by phone, right, to save expense and things like that. But queue them up by phone so that, you know, you have your meeting, you're narrowing it down, you're having the conversation, but if you had some, maybe if you wanted fifteen minutes with each one of them or something and maybe only the top two or three, maybe something, maybe, just those really top-tier ones that come out with your points, so that you could get a comfort level, you could talk to them, you can, we could put them on a screen, you know, so that, but I wouldn't want us for you to go, boy, I really, I don't quite understand what they're saying, you know, I'd like to hear what they're saying, what the principal is saying. Cause if we get there, you know, like, boy, I wish I could talk to them, then we're scheduling another meeting, you know, just to have some interviewing time with the consultants.
Wouldn't that be more critical of if there were two or three that were real close?
Mm-hmm.
And if there's someone that's way out in front.
That's why I'm saying administratively, if you could just, I mean, we'll take a look at that and, you know, if there's, if there's just a couple that are really clumped and they're close, maybe offer some interview time, if there's just one that's clearly above everybody else, then maybe not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright. Any other questions or, or it sounds like we're in agreement with getting started, so. Yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
As a biking buddy of mine would say, strong work.
Alright then, so we'll plan in two weeks to meet.
Work on the survey.
Right, and then work on the survey. We'll get a doodle out for that week of the sixteenth through the nineteenth.